Less to order. We'll call it seven. If you caught the notes when you came in, or if anyone said we've added, I think number 10 is, was not on when you got your packet, so that's new. And was there anything else?
Four donations.
Yeah, four E.
Okay.
We received several more donations.
Okay.
After the fact, so we just detailed them in that four E.
So it's different than what you got, but it's what's here. There's nothing to add, so if someone were going to adopt the agenda that's in front of you, adopt the amended agenda.
I believe we adopt the amended agenda.
I'll second.
Motion by Jason, seconded by Bree, to adopt the amended agenda. All in favor? Post?
Six oh.
Okay. We have no addition.
Well, good evening, thanks for letting me come and talk to you guys. So basically, I'm here to discuss the baseball and softball programs. I would really love for you guys to revisit it, not to bring it back necessarily to Lincoln, but to reopen that relationship with Sylvan and see if we can find a way to have a working relationship where our players can go and play the sports that they love. I know, I don't know how this all works, I don't know how you get that cooperation, I don't, but I do know you guys had a great relationship with them for so many years that if we could bring it back and continue to allow the kids to play, I just think that would be wonderful and great. And that's basically all I wanted to say was, that's all. I just wanted to search for, I just wanted to make sure that all the options have been looked at, all the options have been gone through before we actually say it's done. And so that's, that's all. Thank you for your time.
Moving on, consent agenda. You have listed in front of you, or I can read down through if you want. Approval minutes, payment of bills, treasurer's report, clerk's report. We have minutes from three different meetings. Donations, PTCO for a tractant, burnt farms, hundred dollars AR reading rewards, cubic insurance, AR reading rewards, Leopard Pride, five hundred dollars for track renovation, Lincoln County Conservation District, hundred eighty dollars for the FFA national trip. And then we have the Lincoln Report, which you will also find in front of you. If you haven't had a chance to look over it.
On your weeks of consent.
Okay.
I'll second.
Thank you, Bree. Okay, so you ran into this all right. Motion by Gina, seconded by Bree, to approve the items listed on the consent agenda consisting of the minutes of the regular meeting of September 12th, 2022, the special meeting of September 15th, 2022, and the special meeting of September 28th, 2022. Payment of the bills, the treasurer's report, the clerk's report, accept a three hundred and twenty-five dollar donation from Lincoln PTCO for a tractant, accept a one hundred dollar donation from burnt farms for accelerated reading rewards, accept a hundred dollar donation from cubic insurance for accelerated reading rewards, accept a five hundred dollar donation from Lincoln Pride for track renovations, accept a two hundred and fifty dollar donation from the Lincoln County Conservation District for the FFA national trip, and the Lincoln County Recreation Commission report provided by Michaela Zemusney. Any other discussions? Okay, all in favor? Post? Six oh. And thank you to all those organizations and people and everything for your donations to the school and the kids and their activities, so thank you. Next, we have strategic planning discussion.
That might not be the right phrase, but part of our strategic plan is facilities, and I'm looking for some board direction on the remaining just over a hundred thousand dollars of S R three money that is available to us. Some of the options would be spend every bit of it on high school rooftop units. Another option would be split it, put some, and I'm just listing these things because they're easy approved S R expenses. Try to get windows replaced as many as we could at the high school, those gaps that we saw when we toured there, especially on those south-facing windows. That's kind of, I've exhausted the spending plan that I presented you before, and before I put in another plan to the state to go through the approval process, I would just like some direction on where you think we would get the most bang for our buck. I think that building is where it is. I can tell you, I met with contractors today and we're looking at February before we would even get rooftop units, everything is so far out. There's also a lot of regulation coming down the pipe that everything moves to ninety percent efficiency on heating and cooling, which gives us even more challenges because my understanding what I heard today was when your air conditioner runs, you get condensation that drains out. A ninety percent efficient unit, even the heater, produces condensation. So in the middle of the winter, that condensation will be, have to drain into the building above the roof and be drained out some other way. So just some interesting things going on. Manufacturers are having to retool in order to produce those kind of things. I talked to a supplier today, and even though there's a February outlook on delivery, if we would agree to something, they would lock in whatever today's prices are. But I just am seeking your input on how to best utilize that money that remains. And that will be the end of our federal assistance money through the COVID relief funds.
Where are we currently at in the rotation of replacing some rooftop units?
We have twenty-one units on the roof that are still, that are original to the building. We have replaced six, and there is one new unit sitting, waiting to be installed, but we were hoping to wait until we got, it takes a crane, we're gonna do multiple units. Everything's functioning currently, so there's no great need to move quickly on that single unit. But with that single one, we have twenty units still that are original to the building. They're probably, the estimate is gonna come in for a four-ton unit around seven thousand dollars, maybe seventy-five hundred dollars apiece for those. Part of the concern that I have is then you'll have twenty rooftop units of wage out at the same time. However, we have twenty-seven-year-old units that could all die at the same time as well. It's quite a conundrum. We do have every unit that was taken off the roof recently in my tenure. We have saved those, and they're in storage so that we can use them as parts as needed. But we're, it's just kind of a ticking, I don't wanna call it like a ticking time wrong, but we have outlived those units' lifespan by twelve years, every single one of them. So we just don't know when that will occur.
And when you get new ones, they're not gonna last twenty-seven years.
No, the manufacturer, I had quite a chuckle that these actually lasted this long because he said the next one's wrong.
Is there any value to waiting until we get the results from everything that's going on currently at the school?
The analysis?
Mm-hmm.
We could, and that should be done by December. We could, but I would just say respectfully that that will be on the list no matter what. It'll be there.
Right.
But they might give us other ideas that we should use that money for. I just can't imagine what would be more critical than those units, but there's a possibility.
Well, the windows, with, that's, I mean, the top or pole or either one is going in and out adversely.
That's not enough money to do the windows.
But it could just sound.
Well, I could, well, if I used a hundred percent on our windows, the bid I got, Mrs. Flynn, was it six units they looked at, south-facing?
Oh, yeah.
And it was thirty-five thousand dollars for six.
That was the junior hallway?
And the south end of the high school wing, because we looked at Mrs. Ferris's room and Mr. Rulting's room. Basically, it was anything south-facing. And it was thirty-five thousand for six. I don't have a total window count to even make a guesstimate of what an extrapolation of that would be, but...
There's really not too many more windows in the high school, because there's nothing on the north side. There's a couple shop windows, a weight room window, and then science, never mind, I like, there's more of them.
It's a little smaller.
Than I thought, yeah.
So you're not talking about the library windows and...
Yeah, that's, that would be, the last time I talked to a contractor about that, that was a hundred thousand just for the library windows. Putting a kneehole, fix the drainage and everything else, so...
So I guess this would be a considerably better bid pretty much, if you got a little over thirty-five thousand. With starting on replacing some of that, I think would be good.
I think there's like seven windows on the west side, but they're like the big double ones. That's what I'm thinking off the top of my head, maybe eight.
And then all of it's expensive, now especially.
Did you say how much S R money you had left? Did I miss that?
A little over a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and eleven thousand, maybe get some change.
I would be concerned about buying the new style heating, cooling, rooftop units till they're proven as long as we can, whether we purchase a bunch now and that can hopefully get us some time. But I don't like investing in new technology till those are worked out.
And that heating condensation has not implemented yet, but it's regulations that are coming down the pipe.
Do you know when?
I do not.
The twenty-three's are...
I don't know the answer, no, I'm sorry.
Is that gonna be a retroactive deal for...
That would be excellent.
It'll just be a grandfather deal and any replacement moving forward.
So in the north country, you gotta keep your defroster defrosted so you can...
But it's no different than, you know, the EPA wants all buses to be running on electricity by a certain year as well. And so you imagine every school bus in the country going to batteries, that's just...
Have you heard that too?
I have heard that, I actually read that in an early...
Well, it's, it's funny that in Florida, you don't see electric powerline, repair vehicles, any electric? Wonder what?
At times.
Or, yeah, we aren't here, we aren't...
And I will say, just to raise clear, you know, we have until 2024 for S R three dollars, so it's not a big push, the thing that I would just ask is, if nothing's going to get cheaper, what do we wanna do sooner?
I like the idea of starting to replace some of those windows, I think that's important. There's some pretty big gaps.
Yeah. And some are true.
You know, you could replace HVAC units all you want, but just letting all of that be the cool air right out. That's not gonna help me. But, you know, thirty-five thousand for some of those windows is not awful, and we could still potentially do a couple of units.
There could be ways for it, but that's what I was thinking if we did. You might have windows too.
Yeah.
If your HVAC was actually seven thousand or close to it, if you did ten of those per se, that'd be seventy thousand. And if you did the windows at thirty-five, that's your hundred.
What's the install cost on those? You have to get a crane, and then...
That is installed.
That's installed.
You know, the last ones that we installed, I think it was sixty-seven hundred dollars total package install, a unit. So I'm, you know, it'll be between seven and eight now, I'm sure, before negotiations.
That would give us ten more in the bone pile also to keep eleven old ones running, surely we could...
How do you know which ones to replace?
Find enough, yeah.
I like that idea.
And I would also say this, you know, the reason that we have been so diligent financially is so that our reserves can be built up. So at some point, capital outlay can be, capital outlay expense, if we're sure that our, that we can maintain, and I think, like I've always said, if we can maintain five hundred thousand dollars in capital outlay, I think that's a safe place to be. And then of the excess, then I think we need to reinvest it back into the building. So as I'm working through this year's budget, looking at expectations and projections, you know, I might be able to come back to you after the first of the year and say, projections are this, and we can spend X amount of dollars out of capital outlay, and I'll feel comfortable that we'll still have the reserve level that we need if something happened. Because that is money that's supposed to be intended for our self-sufficiency to repair.
Do you think it'd be wise to save some of that S R money rather than use it all right now since we've got till 2024 to use it? In case something else comes up that would qualify for S R money, or we wouldn't have to dip into other funds? You know what I'm saying?
That's certainly a possibility. There's only sixteen categories we can use it in.
Right.
And air quality control and things like that are just slam dunks without, aren't getting approval for. Technology, between the grants that we've received and Senator Moran's support, we're just about technologied out for several years, which is a good place to be. But we, but that's just, I'm just...
I mean, I like the idea of splitting the money between the windows and that air conditioner units, but instead of maybe, instead of buying ten rooftop units, you buy eight or, you know, something. So you have a little bit of money in case something comes up where we could use that, you know, in the future, either school, either building. Maybe, maybe we don't want to use it out now.
I like keeping a little bit of a reserve, especially not knowing what this analysis is gonna come back with. It seemed like they thought they could put some of that money to use as well.
But we think we're a lot of time with those rooftop units, so we definitely need to be...
But if you bought...
Cheap reading.
Yeah, if you bought seven and we have one ready to go, that gives us a total of eight.
And then even though it's just a couple of years apart, three years apart, at least there is a sprinkling there. There were a couple of Caligresi units up there, then I don't know when they were installed. I'm trying to think of the brand we went to Dycom visit. And so we've just done the three installs since I've been here, the fourth new one's on the ground. There's some Caligresi units, and I don't know how old they are. Mrs. Flynn and I were talking about putting a map together to where we could date, and then I need to get a spray can and put what it, whether it's a three- or four-ton unit or the actual unit, but we need to figure out an install date on everything that's up there.
If you don't buy too many at once, if there is some issue with them or something, we don't have...
Three places.
That doesn't mean they all have a bad capacitor or all have a bad whatever.
George was asleep on the job that day. He didn't show up for the job there.
He didn't show up for the job that day.
So would the board be okay if I revisited window bids? It's gonna exceed twenty thousand dollars by a lot, but I can't, I struggle finding contractors in that industry that'll even come. Now, the superintendent, Liz Serr, another super, has been asking, who does windows in schools? And I asked her to keep me informed of anything she found out statewide, but I could look and find contractors, but it would have to go to a request for proposal since it's over twenty grand, and I don't know if you're ready to go there yet. Or I find out how many contractors have come back and said, I've got three, you'll be ready to get bids.
I think if you find somebody who's willing to do it and willing to get a bid in.
I think assuming you get any of them started, it's gonna be summer report.
Well, that's it, we're preparing, I mean, we're trying to line stuff up for next summer.
Yeah.
Probably can't get things done before the January first deadline, but I bet that's a time it takes.
I'm sure, that's what everybody's saying, first of the year increases.
If we can get a bid in on that, then we'll know how much more S R money we have left over to make a decision on how many units we wanna buy and how much reserve we can get.
Were they on any kind of a timeframe, if you wanna know, if we wanted to order some, if it's February?
No, they, they just said every month you wait, it'll be a month past February, and after the first of the year, it'll be higher.
Do we wanna have him speak for five of them off the top? And then if we figure out windows, then add to that as well.
I think five is the safe number.
Well, I think we should lock in something so that we know, yeah, maybe they would show up.
Well, with a February delivery, that would give me the time to go through the hoops that I have to go through to get approved. You know, when we did the gym, we had to have an environmental study, and we had to have a historical society to sign off and...
Sounds fun.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll get some bids if we need to, we will have a special meeting to prove something, or you'll just have those at the next meeting, maybe?
I'll see what I get, I'll see how fast I get it done, because five units, that's gonna be over twenty grand also, so that'll have to be another bid process. And I will, I will look for window contractors to see where that goes, and in the next week or so, we can get a bid package out for heating, cooling units, looking for five. Good to go?
Good. Okay. I think that was pretty much all we had, I think. Take some?
That frustration continues to mount, and I, you know, I, I don't even know what to say. I feel totally responsible for the failure for that center to open in a timely manner. We cannot get a fire marshal scheduled visit for an inspection. We spent weeks leaving voicemails only to find out that that individual quit, and nobody just thought it would be important to tell the people who was working with that he quit. Other fire marshal inspectors have quit in the last thirty days, and I'm just beyond frustrated. You know, the positive is, we were able to work out a schedule at the high school so our welders can be welding. There seems to be concern about how things are being paid for and how things are being financed. Any Salina Tech welding that's going on in our building, the resources are coming from Salina Tech, welding rods, wire, things like that. We are not funding Salina Tech. They have instructors who are teaching one hundred percent of their classes, and we are not doing that. And there's also concern that we are not open to outside students. That was shared with me today, and I just wanna make it very clear to everybody, this is a Salina Technical College satellite campus. The program is not ours, it is not two ninety-eights, it is not Lincoln County's. Anybody who can meet their qualifications can apply to go to their school, and we do not have the power to refuse students who want entry. We currently, I think I shared last time, have only Sylvan Grove and Lincoln students right now. Anyone in any school district that can get here can apply, and if they meet Salina Technical College requirements for admission, they can be admitted if there is space, and there is space currently. So I think that misconception or misinformation needed to be cleared up. Also, that two ninety-eight is not funding the welding program that they are supplying that material says. We technically are using our machines. But by God, the kids need to be welding, not sitting in a classroom twiddling their thumbs. And I would put out there that I think this would, board would support a hundred percent if we can get those kids doing what they're supposed to be doing, and they're using our units, for the love of Pete. They need to be doing what they're doing, or we're gonna lose some kids who get disillusioned because the center's not opening up. So I'm working on getting letters from contractors that everything is in place and functional, and I'm in contact twice today with the architect, and we're trying to formulate a way to drive to Topeka and go in an office and start rattling some cages, and trying to get a temporary occupancy based upon contractor certifications, that the exhaust system is working, that the fire alarm system is installed and functional, that the firewall has been built, and their shortage of employees is not our problem. So they have got to change some of their procedures and processes to react to the world that we currently live in. Now, I don't know if they have to have legislative action to do that, I don't know if I can get a temporary occupancy, but I have not fought this long for that place to give up now. And if anybody wants to come to Topeka, like a road trip up there, raise a little cane.
Let's take students.
Very frustrating.
Yes, well, I would like to say that I don't think that you can feel like it's partially your fault that it's not open, but I think that you've done a lot to get it there, and it's frustrating that all the hoops we've had to jump through to make it work, it's...
I'd say there's a reason people have been quitting that job, there must be something...
Yes, it's, so the, I don't wanna say stupidity of it, but foolishness of the regulations would drive me to quit.
Extra foolishness of it, yeah.
And who's the automotive guy?
Marty.
Marty Kreisch from today. Wonderful guy, just after Dad and I walked away, if I had a teacher with that much energy for what I wanted to do, would be great. So if we can get these kids in there and talk about tearing motors down and changing a lot of them, rotating tires and just all kinds of good things for automotive kids to...
Whatever the automotive students currently are installing for classes.
They are not. They've actually been busy just getting the shop ready, but everything came in pieces. So they had to assemble all the tool boxes, unpack all the tools, but they are running out of things to do. They have classroom, what do I wanna call them, modules that they can work on?
Simulations.
Yeah, simulation kind of stuff, but I will tell you, they are itching to get some tools in their hands.
So you have videos of the firewall, you have videos showing all the disparate things, components, doing what they're supposed to do, and you had the letters, and those people went with you. I don't, I mean, can you just tell them, I don't care what you say, we're doing it? Based on, we have the proof that it's all good?
I can't say currently what I really think.
Problem is, he has the ability to not let us in at all or whatever, which is frustrating.
Make kind of a music, then give us time to check on you?
No comment at this time, but I'm frustrated. And I apologize to, I apologize to everybody, but I just did not understand how ridiculous the bureaucracy side of this thing is, not they, so...
You should not have to apologize, you have done a fair amount of this work yourself, nonetheless, trying to make it work.
It'll come together.
It'll come together.
So who are the legislators we would reach out to to say, hey?
I just don't think anybody has any power over that entity.
Okay, well, somebody has to.
It's recommended they go talk to Governor Kelly, but she cannot change regulation. And if they don't have a temporary occupancy procedure, she can't just go in and say, give them a temp. It's, it's legislative that we have to go through. So I think changes have to be legislative in nature, so I don't know.
Start from where we're using it, but we're not.
I think it's coming out here while you're here.
All right. Okay. But no, the bathrooms are all coming here, the whole thing looks very nice over there. Disposal of property, ELIS lockers?
Can we add to that or no?
Disposal of property?
Mm-hmm.
I suppose disposal of property is the big thing.
Tell Hillary about the textbooks, we have some more textbooks that have been replaced, but they didn't get thrown in the other pile when you approved, you get the last one disposed of. They were in a classroom, it wasn't being used, and then they, oh, there they are. So they're reading books, surely reading books from the elementary school.
As far as the ELIS lockers, what we're talking about, you can pray to Scraven better than I, but back under the stadium or seating in the gym at ELIS, there's some very anti... there's some very antiquated lockers. Mrs. Flynn doesn't believe they're even fit to be used for NPO if you walk through a locker room. But at basketball or even a football game, the floor has become the new locker and so everything's on the floor even where you have lockers. And these are about, I don't know, what, eight inches wide, you know?
Some of them are squares, probably what, twelve by twelve squares? And then there's some tall skating ones, but I don't, the only time those locker rooms get used, they do get used for practice, but I don't, the kids don't put their stuff in there and then, because they're hauling it from the other building and then the league tournament, but I don't, I mean, no teen is in there long enough, longer than a game. The ladies want to do some more cleaning and they're just, it would give us more space for tornado drills, it would give us more space. They're just, they're not being used, they ask if we can get rid of them, I don't see a reason to keep them, might be able to sell them.
But again, that's our tornado shelter in that building and the more junk that's in there, the more... Where the stuff is in the way.
I agree.
I don't know if they have any value, you know? I used to have a set in my garage where I kept all my hunting clothes, maybe we could put them out there as, for sale by segments. Five locker in a unit or something like that, they're great for car parts and outdoor clothes, you know, or just anything in a shop that you'd hang up in a locker.
Put in your garage.
I would guess if they're not original building, they're pretty dang close, they're pretty old.
They're like military green, they're pretty old.
I recommend that you try to sell them. Or whatever you make, you can afford them.
I'll say, be chic vintage.
People like that stuff, yeah.
There you go, there you go.
Or vintage, yeah, something.
I love you put them on the auction, we're still working on our auction list, I don't know if people will buy.
I think we try, I think we try local first just because they're kind of that fun, like I said, I use them.
Just disposable.
Oh, I can add the books to the, reading books to them, yeah. I'll second it, yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Motion by Jessica, seconded by Gina, that we allow disposal of property of the LES lockers possibly for sale and the textbooks, which would probably just be disposal, so. Any other discussion on that? All in favor? See if so. Okay. Administration reports?
So the, we have some kids that came and asked to put together like a, kind of an alternative, they're kids not, not really interested in sports and they do some musical and stuff and, but they wanted another alternative for activities after school, so they went to Mrs. La Geisinger Library and asked if they could create a board game club. She's volunteering her time, so they're working out all the details, so it's kind of exciting for our kids to have another alternative after school for something to do. I think she's going to do like one day a week and see how that all grows and goes. Our second graders on Thursday went to the pumpkin patch and I, we got multiple comments from different people that went about how amazing our kids acted and their behavior and they listened and they were just very intent. There were a lot of different classes there from other schools and they said that our kids were just really top notch, so that's always good to hear. October, the first week in October was bully awareness week and our kids did a dress up day at the elementary school for three of those days. They wore boots when they stomp out bullies, go sweat bullies. Yeah, so kids like that, they always love to dress up. And they did some activities in our character ed about bullying and so that was great for elementary kids. I want to give a big shout out to Mr. Woltin for organizing the homecoming events. That week is, first off, we should never have it on a full moon, which we did. But it just takes so much work to put all those activities together and then the Friday activities and the bonfire and the bonfire games and the kids have, they always have so much fun, but it does take a lot of work and Mr. Woltin took care of all of it as a super sponsor and I just want to give a big shout out to him because that does take a lot of time and effort. And then we had the homecoming dance on Friday after ballgame, so. And then the other one I want to shout out to Ms. Ferris, putting on the cross country meet on Thursday. Again, I don't know if you've been to a cross country meet, but that is a tremendous amount of effort to put that together. You have to literally draw a line on the entire track and mark it out and make sure it's the right distance and it just is a lot of effort and actually I had a lot going on this last week for some reason and so I usually help her and I didn't get to help her very much this year, so she had her kids out there and she did a great job, it ran seamless, there were no issues and it just rang off really well and she did a phenomenal job. Upcoming, we have parent teacher conferences, junior high, or the elementary school is going to do signup genius again. We started that last spring and it worked pretty well, so we got that all set up. And notes are going to go home on Wednesday for the kids to do the signup genius for their teachers, parent teacher conferences. The high school will just be, I know it will go home, we don't, we don't schedule times up there. We are still investigating ways to get more kids, more parents to, parent teacher conferences at the high school. So kind of working out how about maybe an enrollment for this spring, we'll see, so stay tuned. Uh, let's see, we had kids go to the ECO meet in Wilson, eight kids from Mrs. Brown's science class. They competed in a bunch of activities at Wilson Lake and it seems like it was very successful and our kids did really well. The other night we had NHS induction in probably one of our bigger classes we've had in a long time. Ten kids, well, there were several kids that qualified, ten, ten got inducted. Great kids, they all well deserving and it's just an honor to have that many kids that are involved with leadership and community involvement and activities and have good grades, so a lot of things go into NHS. We have hired a reading specialist for our district and she's been coming, Camille Wagner out of Green Book, she's been coming, which she's been here three times now. And the teachers have just really embraced it and it's been going very, very well. She brings strategies for reading, improving reading phonics, our MTSS program and the teachers at the elementary school and then Miranda, Katie and Brenda also take part in that for our reading at the high school and it's just been very, very successful. In fact, we paid for ten and I'm worried that we're going to have to maybe get more by February, I guess we'll probably not have a date, so. The teachers seem to be very, very positive about it and really liking what she's bringing and improving our phonics and reading programs.
And if I could just add to that, point real quick, when we presented this to the staff at the elementary school, this is total, totally voluntary in nature. This wasn't a program that we said, now you're going to have to do this. We said, hire this resource, it is there for you and if you want to use it and she's booked all day long, every time she's here. Teachers want to know better the science of reading and how we can help fill in any gaps and get our kids ready, so. Just a big shout out to the staff for being willing to understand, hey, this is a tool that could be used and willing to take their meeting with her during their planned times in order to get this one-on-one training and share data and learn about specific strategies for specific instances, so. You know, I will say to that staff, I've been nothing but impressed the whole year spending more time over there than in the past.
She'll also help with our MTSS program in both buildings, continuing to improve and grow it, that's, that's just, it's obese in nature anyways and we are such in the beginning stages of making that great. We've done, we've made huge progress and the time that our teachers have put into it is extraordinary, but we still have a long ways to go to perfect what we're trying to do for those kids. So she, she works one-on-one with those, with that program as well. We wrapped up dental screenings, great opportunity for our kids and our families. They do the screenings, the fluoride check and they put in sealants. And so that's an opportunity for families and we just, Ms. Maddie took care of all that, she does a great job and scheduled all that and they were here for three days and ran a bunch of kids through, so. And then our NHS put on a blood drive, end of October I think, and filled it up. All our bookings were full again like usual, the kids do a great job running that off and then they have the opportunity to do a scholarship program with the American Red Cross, which they always hand a scholarship out to one of our NHS kids for organizing that whole thing. I usually get blood and they always say how wonderful our kids act and how well they're behaving, so it's always good to hear good things. I think that's it, unless I said that for anything, can you think of anything else to add?
Oh, wow, that's a lot. I've stuck for some, all the time.
Yes, every night.
Seemingly. Seemingly.
Oh, I add one more thing. We are very, very close, I don't know if I should spill this out yet, but I'm feeling very excited about it. Really, really close to possibly having a CNA program added. We think we might have a person that can teach it here for sure by next fall, so I'm super pumped about it because we have a ton of kids that are going to grasp that and so I don't know if I should really say that yet because it's not final, but I'm really excited about it.
Next fall is due.
Yes.
Cool.
I'm not promising yet.
Mrs. Flynn said.
Yes. Yeah.
We thought we could pull it off at semester, but we just can't get through some barriers for that to happen.
Some more bureaucracy.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
The AR reading rewards?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, so we started AR, they brought AR back, so everybody was, really wanted that, so we brought AR back and the teachers have been working great, really hard on figuring out what the kids would want for prizes and so then the teachers on their own time have went out and got donations for some of our bigger prizes. We've been using building funds for like the monthly ones. The kids just really seem to grasp the AR program, so I'm glad to have that back, I think it gets kids excited about reading, so, yeah.
Does that like a points, overall points?
So every grade, every grade does their own points and how that is measured and I believe they even sometimes specialize it to individual kids and what their abilities are. And then if they meet those requirements for each month, then they get a prize or award. I think we just posted about all the kids that got this last month, they get tagged and then they got candy bars this month. They're working on some brand prizes for the end of the semester, so.
Yep, it's pretty exciting, you, you know, I'm trying to think who all I see, you just about every day. I try to be at the grade school if I'm in town every single morning to say hi to kids and it's pretty fun when kids come up and they're like, I'm taking two AR tests today, I read two books, you know? And they're telling me that, I'm like, that's awesome.
Yeah, I was in the building the other day and I actually happened to witness a couple of kids that were trying to figure out what their, what, what they would get if they reached their goal and then they were checking with the other teachers to clarify what it, what it is they would get and then they were just so excited about it, so it was a fun observation.
They're, the elementary is so fun because they're excited by like, they each get a tag for so many points and a candy bar. Now, if I can figure out what motivates those kids up there, we are going to conquer the world. Yeah.
It is exciting and I, you know, I've said forever and I've said in staff meetings as well, to me, if you can read, you can do anything. If you can't, there's not much you can do. You know, you can learn math if you can read, you can learn science if you can read, you can do anything, but you've got to have that skill. And I'm, if things are going well, it's exciting.
Any questions for me? Okay, Scott?
I just want to tell you, you know, Wednesday we don't have E-school, next week you approve that off and I just want you to be aware of it.
This week.
Exactly. The twelve, the twelve, I got that one, right? I just want you to be aware, if you hear any feedback, there is a high probability that we will have weapons and blanks in our buildings. There won't be any kids there, I have already expressed that to the staff, that this could cause some anxiety, but if you don't understand what it sounds like, then you don't have any idea what it sounds like because anybody who does outdoorsy stuff, it's a different ball of wax when you're indoors. So I've talked to two different agencies, law enforcement agencies and they're, they will plan if it works out on having something so that staff can say, this is what that would hear like, sound like on this wing, this is what it would sound like on this wing. Most of the time, if it's on one end and doors are closed, you can't ever hear it anyway. And then the afternoon, people will be split between two agencies in their respective buildings and talk about strategies specific to that. But I just want to let you know, we've let the staff know that that's a possibility, it can create a little bit of anxiety, but I think it's just important exposure.
You know, we've, you know, given them the opportunity to have such a fantastic training and taken a whole day to do it, might as well do it correctly.
Yeah, it needs to be permanent, real.
Yes.
Yeah, the other thing I want to share with you, I put a paper in front, and it could be available to anybody. This, we did finish our superintendent's report today, it's called the SO sixty-six. I don't think it's because it's sixty-six pages, but it feels like it and here's the big shout out. So a lot of the data uploads from our September twenty camp. The rest of the data, the staff in this building toil over personnel reports, FTEs. And just to explain the complexity of the data, if there's a teacher that is at the secondary level and the elementary level, Greta and Norma have to figure out how many tenths they're at each. But if they're at the junior high and the senior high, then they have to figure out the tenths of their time for that too. So everybody needs to total one FTE, one employee FTE, but it might be two tenths here, four tenths there, six tenths there and so it is a tremendous amount of work and ever since I've been here, this is I guess my third SO sixty-six, I thank you for all the work you've put into that. You and Norma are just irreplaceable because you do the majority of that heavy lifting so that I can click submit. So thank you so much. Anyway, back to the student class, this is from the SO sixty-six, these are our population numbers and I've told you every time that I can that I try to look fifty yards down the field, not the next play and not the next first down. And this is just for your awareness, you know, we have these odd spikes in ninth grade and seventh grade, but once you hit third grade, our trend line is what we all know. But I think it needs to be in front of everybody all the time as we make plans because once, you know, second, first or kindergarten gets to be seniors, we don't know what that next trend line is going to be. So I just always want you to be aware strategically that the reality that we live in is that a small world district that's not experiencing growth typically experiences decline in, in student numbers. So this isn't a big shock and awe thing, but every, most graphs I do, I try to put a trend line in there as a visual. This is not nearly as significant of the trend lines of the finances I used to show you, but it is a trend and I think it's just something we need to be always aware of, planning for the future. I just wanted to share where we were on our September twenty camp day by grade.
All we got. Any questions for Scott? Next on the list, we have an executive session for personnel. Five minutes, I don't know.
No, five, a big time, five, okay.
Are we going to executive session for five minute personnel? Okay.
I'll second you.
Okay. Motion by Jason, seconded by Gina. Okay, motion by Jason, seconded by Gina, that U S D T ninety, Board of Education go into executive session at seven forty-nine PM for five minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing personnel matters for non-elected personnel and that the Board of Education return to open meeting at seven fifty-four PM in the Board of Education conference room. The executive session is required to protect the privacy of non-elected personnel exempt under COVID. Any questions in the hall in favor? O six oh.